Hi, everyone. I'm going to call the December 21st, 2021 school committee meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for being here during this very busy time of year, but we need to keep this moving forward. So we all had the opportunity to meet all four candidates last week, which we really enjoyed, and we felt very fortunate to have four strong candidates. I think any one of them would make a good superintendent, so it's now our task to determine who is the person who's right for Hingham and who's right for Hingham right now, given all our strengths, our challenges, and our vision for the future of the district. So for anyone who's watching on TV or members of the public, in addition to the public interviews last week, several members of the committee along with Dr. Maestas toured the candidates around the six buildings, so they got to meet people. They also met with student groups, the leadership team, central office staff, school staff, and all of them shared feedback with the committee. And we also provided feedback forms for school staff and the community, and we want to thank everyone for providing their perspectives and their feedback. It was extremely helpful for the committee. Probably the most important process of this, part of this process so far, though, are the reference checks. We've divided the reference lists up and have spent the last couple of weeks calling various people who worked with the candidates and have also reached out to other people in their communities who would have information. And it's a very in-depth process, and I just wanted to quickly outline it for everybody, just to make it clear that the interview, the public interview is important. It's a very important piece, but it's only one piece of the whole profile of the candidate. So that's where we are now. And so far, all of our work has been conducted independently. We've all kind of gone off and done our own reference checks, and tonight's our first opportunity to actually discuss the candidates together and our findings and impressions, so I'm really curious to see where everybody is. So our task tonight is to decide where we go from here. We'll start by discussing what we know about the candidates in relation to the ideal candidate profile that we have up on the website. And the first thing we want to decide is if we have enough information about all the candidates, or if there's someone we want to learn more about, if there's something that we feel like is missing after all of the community feedback and the interviews and the reference checks. So the agenda is worded in a way that will allow us to vote if we are coalescing around a particular candidate, so we can see where we go, or if we need more information. So I was thinking we could go through the candidates one by one and share kind of initial thoughts, and then if we want to learn more about the candidates. And if it's all right with everyone, we'll just go in the order that they visited the district. Okay? All right. So let's start with Margaret Adams. Does anyone have any thoughts, impressions? Do you feel like you have enough information about her to make a decision one way or the other as tonight, where you stand? Michelle?
I've been really impressed with Dr. Adams, both with her interview and in the reference checkings I've done, conducted. I have not heard a negative word, and it's been, all the feedback has been very consistent. Ready for this, has done a lot of the work already, always prepared, one of the smartest people in the room, like, just really, really great feedback. I was particularly impressed with the student feedback that myself and Carrie and Liza were lucky enough to meet with the students who had met with the candidates. There are so many things that they said about Dr. Adams really resonated, and just, you know, they're like, she seems so student-focused. I think they wrote down some quotes that she said as part of their, you know, as part of their due diligence. So I, I don't know, she was, I think, a really strong, really strong candidate.
Great. Anyone else?
I have similar feedback to Michelle, thought she was really well-prepared for the interview. I keep chuckling that she had four-point answers for every question that we asked her. I thought she was very thorough, really smart, references that I had chatted with. Two different references said she is the smartest person I know, smartest person in the room, however, very humble. She is in the classrooms a lot, parents, teachers, students, all know her. She's tough, she's not going to shy away from doing the right thing. Great mentor for teachers. She's had a positive, there was one reference check who was a teacher in her former district, and then she left to go to Melrose, and she is a parent in that district, so she was upset that she was losing her as a mentor. But she said she had a positive impact on her, on teaching staff and her. She motivates teachers. She brings in coaches for teachers. She focuses on the PD. She's well into her equity and inclusion work. She's got great social media presence. She even blogs. She's got a genuine curiosity and is always diving into the detail. Provides great resources for parents and families. She's approachable and friendly, deep understanding of curriculum. And I think that, you know, her district, just looking at the numbers, it's just very similar to Hingham, similar size, similar student makeup, so I thought she was great.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say I heard similar, and I was really impressed. I talked to both the president of the union and the vice president of the union, and I was curious about the culture in the schools and the relationship with the union, and they said that it was very positive. And the president of the union even said, yeah, we're a happy place. And that Margaret had a big contribution to that. She really, she listened, and she was very collaborative with the teachers. And I asked about the high school scheduling, because that's something that we're in the process of doing, and we're working with our union to do that. And so the president told me that they've now gone through a couple of different flex block schedules, but they worked together to do it, and that when, but, you know, that was Margaret's responsibility, and when a decision had to be made, the decision was made, but she was like, we're going to make, we're going to work on this. If we need to change it, if we need to adapt it, that's what we'll do, but we're moving forward. And I really thought, you know, coming from the teacher, and the president is a teacher in the high school as well, that that was very positive, and that they're collaborative, but, you know, the decision's still made and they're moving on, but that they're working together to address it and focused on the students. I also am impressed with the restorative justice work that they're doing, and that they've been doing it for several years in their district. And it obviously is working because it's a very positive culture, and that's something that we're just beginning. And to have somebody that's well experienced with that is valuable to me. I also asked Carols Perez to talk to the Metco director because it's the only, yeah, that was, the Metco program was something that came out of the students' questions. It's very loud and clear that they're, that's top of mind to them to have a positive Metco program in Hingham. So I thought, oh, well, we have one candidate who has a Metco program, let's find out. And Carols talked to the current Metco director and the previous one who's moved on. Both of them work directly for Margaret and gave rave reviews of her and how they've, she's coached them and worked with them and worked with the students. The other thing, oh, I also asked the union about, you know, the pandemic experience. Yeah, it wasn't good for anybody. And also, and this is to tie together, I also asked about what's Margaret's attention to detail, because of doing all operations, you get the little things right, it's going to make people happy. And the union president said, yep, she's great with details. And the example she gave was the 10 days of professional development that the teachers went through going into the next school year. And she said that Margaret had a stat, had informed everybody over the summer, had 10 days of great professional development, every day was planned appropriately, every morning she resent everybody, the plan, the schedule, so that it was top of their emails. And, you know, as challenging as it was, she made it really great for everybody. And so that, that impressed me. Both the vice president and the president of the union were like, we don't want her to go. And that they have a good relationship, but they both said, you know, there's, there's always people that, you know, we always have things we're dealing with, but it's worked out, and it, we move forward, we make a decision, but we move forward, and we're still very collaborative. So that was impressive. I did look at, I created a spreadsheet with all the school profile data. I did share it with the school committee. We have not talked about that. But I was really impressed that Melrose has a, they have growth in their academic performance. They have a similar per pupil spend to Hingham, even a little less, and they've still shown growth. And they also have a similar student-teacher ratio, and that there's performance there with their students. And, you know, it's not as high as Hingham, but it's a very different demographic. And the teachers I spoke with said that, you know, they'd both been 23, 24-year-long teachers. They said that demographics have shifted dramatically to being much more diverse and more English-language learners in the district, but they continue to have improved growth and academic performance. And, you know, it's, so it was really, I was very impressed when I saw the data. I was like, wow, I never would have, I never would have imagined that. So I, that really stood out to me. And then one other thing that we learned from the students is that Margaret, in her spare time, in her community in Dedham, is a town meeting member. They have representative town meeting, and that she initiated on the floor of town meeting to establish a diversity-
As a human rights commission?
Human Rights Commission in town. And she's a Girl Scout leader, which I've tried in my past, and it's a very impressive volunteer role, I must admit. But, so, you know, Melrose is a city government, but she lives in a community, one of our benchmark communities too, that's a town meeting government, and she's active in it. And so that she would understand, have deep understanding of our form of governance. So that was something that, thank you to the students for pulling that out. I saw it on her resume, but, you know, they had the chance to talk to her about it. So those are some of the key things for me.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for sharing the data. That was really helpful.
I'm going to try not to repeat what my colleagues already said, so I'm short and sweet. One of the things that I don't think anybody mentioned yet, that in Melrose, they have a labor management committee, and they usually, although they don't make changes, they are very proactive and effective. They meet when a potential grievance arises, and they walk through it and resolve the issue. And I was very impressed. This is all based on my observation and also reference, not only talking to individuals in Melrose, but talking to individuals here, as a matter of fact, that came from the Melrose area. She is very intelligent, well-prepared, and in the whole experience within, in terms of building project, is just pretty much with renovation. If I misspeak, please correct me, okay? So no experience in building new buildings and such. The whole work with this pad and also with equity and inclusion is very, very impressive. I also hear that she is, you know, appreciates the values, the high needs, needs value that we all also share here in Hingham. What else? And there's a feeling, based on feedback, that should be a good fit to Hingham.
Thank you, Carls. Michelle?
Yep. I would, I agree. I find Dr. Adams a very strong candidate. She was described to me as an exemplary leader and someone who has excellent listening skills and a very collaborative style. She's an educate, she is an educational mentor and coach who has proven to have excellent problem-solving skills and is also, is keenly observant, which Liza touched upon. I've also heard a consistent, consistent theme about her is that she makes data-driven decisions and has a strong understanding of the curriculum of all grades. And she, you know, she has the good understanding of the Metco program. I believe she has some MSBA experience in, but not in a new building, but in renovation projects. She appears to have some, you know, some knowledge of the process. So I was very impressed.
Just one more thing I forgot to mention is that the staff were very impressed that she, the day before the interview, she taught a PD course. And staff feels that with the high level of stress, that, you know, she is not only student-focused, but also staff-focused. As a matter of fact, I liked her answer to the question that I asked in terms of how do you, you know, involve staff in the decision-making process? And her answer, because I was looking for overall staff, was perfect, because she did include overall staff. And that is what we are looking for.
Again, this, it's the same story everyone's been telling. People, several people use the phrase, she's the smartest person I've met. But I think one thing that really stood out is how mentoring she is. There were several people who said she saw something in me that I didn't know that I had. And then there now, as they were early young classroom teachers, and now there, years later, are instructional coaches and, you know, other leadership positions in the district. Also, she's, I was concerned going in that she did not have superintendent experience, but she, talking to her mentors, I was, I would ask about that, and they said, well, you have to understand, she mentored a new superintendent, and she's worked incredibly closely with him. She knows the job of superintendent, like, the superintendent that is currently in Melrose came on while she was the stability in the district, and she played a very large role, the primary role, in mentoring the current superintendent of Melrose. So I think that's important. But, and there was just, you know, a general feeling of like, such warmth, such esteem, such, you know, from everyone. And they would, they all, people would comment that, I know she has this on her resume, but you have to understand that this, you know, especially with her equity work especially, that, I know she has this on her resume, and she's gone to the right trainings and led the right workshops and all of that, but this is, you know, core to who she is, this work. So this is really, I was very, very impressed with her, especially from the reference checks, that in a way that was there if you were really listening to her answers and not just sort of looking at the, you know, her presentation. But I think she's maybe someone who's slow to warm up, but she seems to be no drama, no-
That's good.
Yeah. Yes.
That's good. Yeah. I'll just kind of, I won't repeat what people have said, except for, I did want to mention the equity work, the fact that they're, you know, they've been doing this for years, and we're just starting now, so that, that experience would be really helpful. And then the strong experience mentor came through from everybody I talked to. I spoke with the two superintendents who worked with her, and they both noted that she, she builds capacity. So she's really, has a real talent for spotting talent and then building it up through professional development and leadership opportunities. And then they have a very high-functioning leadership team, and she was a driving force behind it. And one of, I love this, one of her references described her as having the right balance of accountability with love and support, and mentioned her empathy with, with staff. So I thought that was good. Seems like she has a really good relationship with the community and the community groups, and brings in outside groups to enhance student experience and education. She's also, seems very skilled at finding grant opportunities to bring in, so that's, that was good. And I just noticed she was a driving force behind some change in Melrose, both the diversity, equity, and inclusion work, and also changed to the way they deliver their curriculum. And she did it with very little budgetary support, because they, her people's spend is lower than ours, as Liza mentioned. And also, she brought the staff along. And to be able to do both of those things, I thought was really impressive. So, yeah, and I went in similar, you know, she's not a sitting superintendent, but at some point, everyone has to make the leap, right? So I think one thing, if we do, if we do end up going with her, we can set up some coaching and make sure that she has the support she needs. That's something that we can do as a school committee. Oh, one other thing I wanted to mention is, I guess she did set up a COVID dashboard for their district, and it's in real time. It's, I don't know how they did it, but they can, you know, look at any moment and see cases. Is the student vaccinated? Has it been boosted? Like, it's really, really cutting-edge, and she said it's been, it's been very helpful for conversations with the staff and the community, so, so, yeah. So that was good.
Is that on the, or is what the-
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But I don't know if it's internal.
It probably wouldn't be for the public.
Oh.
Yeah. I think, I think that was more internal.
Yeah.
So, okay. So, well, that's good. Very positive. Should we talk about Andrea Schwab next? Let's see, on the table?
So I, I will say Andrea, the references were so glowing about Andrea. Some of the key things that people say was that she has no problem like rolling up her sleeve and pitching in, but in a supportive way, not in a micromanaging way. Very creative, very caring, very passionate. She has a way of messaging things, like delivering hard messages, like if their MCAS results had slipped, but in a way to deliver the message without panicking people and not blaming people, just saying, these are what they are, and these are the steps we're going to take. And so they thought she was a great messenger. She really can think outside of the box, they were saying, sort of, when she can, when she has to message some sort of, something difficult. She puts in all the time and the effort to figure out what it's going to take to turn things around or correct things. She's had a huge positive impact on the district in her tenure there. And my, my thing that I wrote there, I was like, my thoughts are, I keep hearing, sensing how student, that in this, in her district, students are the focus. They're her focus, and they're the focus of all the decisions that they make now.
I heard similar things. Student-focused, diligent, good listener, a lot of interactions with parents and kids. She's very patient with them, takes the time to help them understand and does it graciously. She's transparent, student-centered. She is passionate about education, and she's comfortable with all of it.
I only called one reference. There was a teacher, and he's on the grievance chair of the association, but he actually told me that there, he didn't know much, she didn't, Andrea didn't have much interaction with the leadership of the union just because of her position. And he had worked with her, though, on a broader evaluation commission-type thing outside of the region. So he was very impressed with her knowledge and her passion and great leader, great educator. So that was, I didn't get much extra from what we had already marked in the interviews.
I heard many positive things about Dr. Schwab. You know, she's very energetic, very creative, really enjoys empowering her staff to on the education and where he is. You know, she really believes that the superintendent cannot do everything by themselves. And she has, you know, you know, secondary-level experience and also central office experience. Based on her answers, unfortunately, she did not answer my question, the same one that I, you know, referenced before. She was more teachers-focused here, although the reference actually checked that was provided, did say she was very student-focused. I didn't see that through the, you know, answer the question. And, you know, I think one of the things that she said, he, she was actually quite surprised that she was selected, you know, one of the finalists. And, you know, I appreciate her honesty. That is what, you know, we also are looking for on superintendents. And, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Yeah. I heard, you know, she has a solid in-depth knowledge of education and a good understanding and in-depth knowledge of leadership skills and the roles that they have. I felt that all of the answers that she gave to our questions last week were good examples of how she's an innovative leader, and she's, you know, she's got a great vision for the district that she's in, and the future of education in general. I felt like she was just really cares about education and is very student-focused.
I thought she, what I really liked about her was she seemed very dedicated to the highest-need students in her district, and I think that was really a big chunk of her focus. I think she's less experienced. And, I mean, different, her answers were good, but they were, I mean, for example, she would talk about the union position without ever giving you an idea that she understood what the teacher perspectives were behind the union position. She talked about, you know, equity, and her answer was sort of, I'd listen. It's amazing. So I don't think she had, she didn't give the impression she has really any experience with that. So there were a lot of holes. I think she's a lovely person. I'm not sure she'd be a match for Hingham.
Yeah. I thought she was very nice and authentic. I really, I drove her around one of the mornings and really enjoyed our conversations. Her references were stellar, as Michelle mentioned. They all described her as data-driven, like, she would, she would take data and everything, and if something didn't appear to work, take it, like, what does the data say, and adjust, which was good. She was described as a really strong mentor, which was nice. And I also really value her MSBA experience with the new school from what I've heard. It's nice, so that's a positive for her. So, okay. We can move on to Dr. Scott Carpenter. You want to start with him?
Sure. Dr. Carpenter. I think the biggest theme that I came away from in my reference checks was his ability to nurture and develop talent. I heard that over and over. You know, when you do these checks, everyone says, we don't want you to take the person from us, so it's hard to say nice things about them. But I did hear about Scott, which I thought was one of the best compliments someone could get when giving a reference. They said, if you take him, we don't mind, because the leadership will be, the district will be fine without him because he set us up for success. Not because he didn't contribute, but because he's built a bench, and we will, we will miss him terribly, but we'll be able to go on. And I thought, that's really, that's testament to someone's leadership, right? So that really impressed me. The fact that he is currently a superintendent and has gone through some difficult times in putting, bringing together two districts, two very different districts, bringing them into the same regional district. I've heard from multiple people that his budget skills are fantastic. He can maneuver and manipulate in a good way to really get things done. He, very authentic, approachable, accessible. And the big, the big thing about him was that his science background, right? That he saw COVID coming from a mile away when most people were not, and his district really was on top of things. They were, you know, they had a written plan two weeks prior to the March 2020 closure because he saw it coming, and then as soon as they closed, he said, this isn't going to be three weeks, folks. This is going to be for the long haul. So that really just showed a lot of foresight. You know, he anticipates, he projects. That's a lot of what I heard about Dr. Carpenter.
Foresight is the first thing that I saw on my list here, that he's worked through a strategic plan, he's a great support for our staff. He would talk about, they would talk about, there might be a number of disagreements with the union, but it never impacted their working relationship. He's very respectful. He's got great financial management, working with two very different towns and working through the politics of that. He's really strong there. He's committed to the DEI work. He, the story I really loved, he wanted an equal opportunity at commencement for, for families of color, so he couldn't contact some of these families via email. They weren't responding, so he ended up going door-to-door to try to find these families. They weren't responding, so he ended up going door to door to try to find these families so that they could participate in that, which I just thought that that showed real dedication. Excellent communication with parents, strong, really strong written communication skills. Great experience in multiple districts. I also liked this part about the non-negotiables, when he was talking about how there were things he was willing to work with, with the teachers and the union, but he went in and said, these are my non-negotiables. He's got experience with building projects. I also heard that he brings a level of calm and he's a, he has an ability to focus on what the real issue is and just kind of get rid of the noise that's around. So that was, that's Dr. Carpenter for me.
Okay. So I talked to two of the references he provided and then I talked to two people that live in Chatham, who I contacted. So the, I talked to the current union president and she would be sad if he left. They generally have a good relationship and that everything is good, that he's very focused on doing what's right for kids. And I asked about the non-negotiable issue from, you know, how did the union perceive it? And especially with the COVID, he had talked about that in the interview. But then it was understood that the non-negotiable is very focused on the students' wellbeing and that he wanted the students in school because that was what was right for them. And the, the union understood that. And then he did talk to them and worked very collaboratively with them on all of their issues that they needed for getting back to school safely and that he was, he worked very collaboratively with them. And that even during the shut, the original shutdown in the spring, they were very pleased with his foresight, but that they, he also made professional development time available for them at that time, got them all set up so that they could then teach remotely and work remotely. And so he is very conscious of every, everyone and making sure people were operating smoothly and that the students were taken care of. I also, his DEI work, I noted that they have a task force in place with, for a couple of years now with numerous subcommittees that they're already operating under. And it includes many parents and, and the staff and, you know, across the board on various different subcommittees. And he, one thing that was said, he is the most honest person that you'll ever meet and in, in a good way. And sometimes he shares too much because he wants you to understand it, but that it's very honest about and passionate about education and students. So, oh, and then I also talked to, they did have in their negotiations with their unions, two collective bargaining agreements ago, they had a prolonged negotiation and had to bring in a mediator. And I heard from the school committee member and Scott and the union confirmed it. It was about the financial situation. It had nothing to do with, it was not related to working conditions or, and it was strictly finances. And, but then the subsequent collective bargaining and the pandemic return to school negotiations were very collaborative and everybody worked through them fine. So that was sort of a thing of the past. I spoke with a woman that was a League of Women Voters contact of mine and she was a former principal and lives in Chatham. And she was, it turned out, I just called her to see what did the league think of the superintendent in town? And then it turned out she was part of the hiring committee for the principal for the Chatham Elementary School. She was invited as a community member and he had tasked the hiring committee and it was staff and administrators and the other principals, the middle school principal and the elementary principal, which I thought was good, that the middle school principal was going to be, have a say in the elementary principal for, you know, what was going to come to them eventually. But she said the process was very well run, very, they had two candidates and then they put forth the two candidates. Scott reviewed them and then, and then shared with the committee his thoughts on both of the candidates and then he ended up picking the candidate. So that was nice insight of how his processes go and that it's similar to what we do too. So that was kind of reassuring to me that, okay, this is, you know, we can move on and, and maybe enhance what we're doing. And, oh, then I also talked to a parent in the schools and one of, it's a parent who moved into the schools in the last two years because of COVID situation. And she said her kids adapted very well. She had a middle school child that needed some testing entering and the school was very responsive, did the testing immediately, shared the results, let, you know, had a discussion about what do you think is best for your child? They felt very welcomed, which I thought coming into the middle of middle school is a tough thing, so that was a positive. They feel there's a lot of school pride for their high school students, which, you know, she was like, that's what I remember of, when I was, you know, that's how it's supposed to be. So that was good. And she said he's been very good communicating to parents. They get, you know, they do social media, but they do emails. And then she gets a text message when an email is sent so that she knows to look for the email. So, and they get like weekly updates now because of COVID. So that's, those are the, oh, and then, you know, she did talk to me a little bit about, you know, they have challenges being on the outer Cape of, because of their location, she said that they had a problem getting a Spanish teacher this year and her daughter was enrolled in Spanish. Because there's, there's housing issues that teachers, you know, new teachers have trouble affording housing. And because of that challenges, they didn't drop the class. They found an online class for the students to take so they could still take Spanish. So I felt like, okay, you're making the best of a really challenging situation of hiring staff. So, you know, I felt like, okay, good, you know, problem solving and not giving up. So just examples.
That's all great things. It's hard to actually.
Sorry, I'm like, I'm just like dumping it.
Yeah, so, so I also spoke with the staff that reports to him. I'm not going to name the positions, so I'll keep that in confidentiality. But the individual said to me, Amel, Carlos, please forgive me if I get emotional. And, you know, to me, that was very close and say, look, I actually left a job to come to this district and I came because of the superintendent. He is don't show earth. He doesn't have an ego and he really cares about his staff. I'm afraid that, you know, I'm very happy for him that he's applying, it's about time because he's been leading us and he's very inclusive. But I'm afraid that with his departure, I might leave as well. So I sort of like talked to the individual that we may have an open. You know, it was really a total reference and the person went into the details of how he really cares about individuals, how he sort of like individuals from the community comes to him and talk about being on the school committee, individuals of color, and he encouraged them to run for office. He is fiscally conservative, oh, let's see, the word actually is fiscal responsible is that was used. I want to quote correctly. He is, like, as Liza said, you know, he set the grounds into negotiation, reopened the schools from early on, what's not negotiable and the unions, the union respected that. I spoke with the union leadership as well and they also said that he is great to work with. What we have seen throughout the COVID is many school committee members throughout the country resigning. On his school committee, they are, everyone sort of like praised him. And one individual said that Dr. Cap, the leadership during the last 18 months of COVID pandemic has been nothing less than outstanding. His implementation of COVID planning meetings with his administration in the summer of 2020 led to successful early September opening of Monomoy, the schools for both remote and in-person. Again, they're very sad to see him applying elsewhere. He may leave, but he's very, they're very happy for him. And they realize that Dr. Capton has created a positive system-wide culture defined by our school motto, a home way from home. I heard nothing but all positive things about him. Here in Hingham, our leadership team, along with, you know, teachers also praised him. And the word ego was used once again. That is amazing how he interviews, that he's so don't show earth, given the fact that he's actually, he is a Marine Corps vet, I believe. That is correct. I just got to find my other piece here. And he is actually value rank and file. His answer to my question, similar question, was also one of the best because he did include all the staff, not just one set of staff. But also, so he possesses essentially what we are looking for in a superintendent. He is a student focused, he's a staff focused, he has HR experience. He does have contract negotiation experience, negotiating contracts with several unions in different, three different districts. He has budget experience. I believe he mentioned to us in the interview, if I'm not wrong, he had, has done over 20, either 21 or 27 different budgets. And I just want to say one more thing that I just saw. Hold on just one second. I want to make sure I cover everything. And he is focused on our special ed students, you know, the high needs, inclusion and diversity. He is the district that he has been part of it. He is pretty similar to Hingham, not the current one, but the previous ones in Lincoln, Sudbury. And he also works, worked on the Lexington school system. He, he worked on three different projects, building new schools. So he has great relationship with MSBA. And I believe I covered everything. He has great understanding of the end values, the curriculum that we, you know, we go by here and I'm not using the word because I didn't write the whole thing, so I apologize for that. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Yeah, I've heard very, very similar things, that he's a, a strong leader, data-driven practice. I heard from many people that, you know, he really takes the time to listen to people and if it's somebody that they have, you know, opposing views, he listens first and then he explains his own reasoning with database examples, which I, I really liked hearing that. I find him to be an intelligent educator, kind of with like a, I've heard that someone described him as a no-nonsense style. And, you know, he's developed a positive professional climate for his administration team and faculty. And I feel like I heard over and over, you know, that there's just that mutual respect and trust that he has with his, his administrative team. And I also heard a few times that he has fantastic instincts and he puts people in the right positions and trusts them. I think we all kind of mentioned that. You know, he has experience with, you know, strategic plan, experience with creating one and following them. You know, he even implemented the, his equity task force. And the other thing I feel that, you know, he became superintendent just after it regionalized and he created this kind of this new district from scratch. I think that really speaks volumes with what he did. I also liked that I heard that he increased the access to AP classes from two to 16. And I also could hear, you know, he speaks the, the pride he has regarding the different types of art programs that his district provides. And that's about, that's all.
Again, with relationships, I think he's a quieter, sort of more behind the scenes type of leader. I got the people that had connected with him, really connected strongly with him. I talked to one teacher who had a health scare that brought him out of the classroom for several years, was in the hospital like for a year or so more. And he talked about how not only holding his position and keeping him up to date with the school, but would be visiting him in the hospital and regularly and staying up to date over the course of two years with him. And he said, and we're not friends. I don't know his family. We're not, you know, I've never been to his house. Like this isn't one of my friends coming to visit me. This was my superintendent coming. So I think the relationships are really strong. I think the people that work with him are, you know, very strongly connected with him. I, I was disappointed in his interview. I thought he was rambling and didn't answer many of the questions. He never answered the sped question. He never answered Jen's values question. I, I thought his verbal communication skills were lacking in both the team meeting with the teachers and with the, I would sat in with the meeting with the teachers, was the one sort of public, Kingham-based meeting that I was able to go to. Yeah, I've sort of had a different take on that, this is my non-negotiable anecdote, that, well, I actually heard him say that anecdote twice. I can't imagine at the start of the pandemic, if someone went to the HEA and said, this is my non-negotiable, people are going to be back in person, all the students are going to be back in person. I can't imagine that would have.
It was.
I know they had, it's a different.
It was the August, it wasn't the March.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of his answers were anecdotal and less programmatic. He gave a lot of stories about interactions with people, which doesn't tell me as much about what he would do as the superintendent. I don't need a superintendent who will go to have a nice conversation with the kid about his alcohol use. I need a superintendent who will hire drug and alcohol counselors, for example, you know what I mean? I, just trying to think if I'm missing anything. I thought he would be a strong leader. I think he'd be not a flashy, out there, high drama leader, which I think is good. I would really appreciate. I'm wondering, yeah, I'll just leave it there. Okay.
Yeah, I heard a lot of the same things. He's described as a humble leader, I think. And, you know, references say that he builds a deep bench, like it's similar to what you said, like they, they're going to miss him, but they'll be okay because he has the people there, which is good. He seems like somebody who really wants to know how things work, which that kind of curiosity is really important. I liked his strategic plan experience, both the developing it and implementing it. He's a strong writer. The blog posts that he has are really good, so that, those, that communication skill I think is, is really good. MSBA experience, of course, the budget experience. He's, you know, being a superintendent in Lincoln Sudbury, it's a town that like is sort of more, more similar demographically to Hingham than any of the other people. And I think that's, that could be helpful as far as he has the experience dealing with that population too. I really liked how proactive he was with COVID. He had mentioned that he, you know, he saw it coming. He bought Chromebooks in advance before anything, anyone said, he knew in January it was coming, provided the PD in advance. And then, you know, I sort of have a different take on the, the non-negotiables, because we, I, we had spoken, Liza and I were speaking to him when we were touring and before the leadership. And the way he kind of described it there was, he said he had these non-negotiables, he wanted this, but it was like, okay, we need to do this, but how can we do it together? And he kind of collaborated with the union and the fact that he was able to get it done, it speaks volumes, I think. It's, I don't think it was so much like a hard line in the sand and like this, you know, with a stick or anything like that, you know? I think, I was, I was kind of impressed with that. He seems to work very collaboratively with the unions to get things done. I mean, I think, I, my only two things with him, I guess I'd want to know a little more is, you know, he has experience at Lincoln Sudbury and Lexington, which are, you know, similar kind of student parent communities to, to Hingham. But, you know, that's very, Hingham's very different than Monomoy, and I think there's just less parent engagement, you know, on all levels there. So, I mean, it would be an adjustment. And, you know, his experience with that during COVID was with those kind of communities with, you know, just, we have, we have very involved parents, and that's a good, that's a good thing. It can be, it can be something that's hard to navigate. And I don't think COVID's not ending anytime soon, so I think we need to make sure that whoever comes in can navigate that. And I wanted to hear more about special education, too. Yeah, so that's, those are kind of the two. But I thought he was great. I think I'd be comfortable with him, you know, so. So, and then next we have Jennifer Curtis. You want to start?
Sure. Dr. Curtis, Jennifer Curtis from, formerly of Waymouth Superintendent. Her, I think what I saw during the interviews was very polished, very professional, very strong leadership skills. And in my reference checks, I heard she was a great coach and mentor. She listens and values feedback, but she is not afraid, if it doesn't match the district's vision, to explain that it doesn't match the district's vision and to, to, you know, do it the way that it was, you know, she had wanted it done, or, you know, in the way that it would match the values and vision of the district. She was very accessible. She conducted a lot of open forums for staff and community throughout her years, but particularly, I think, during the period of time during COVID that she was in the district. They mentioned that there was a lot of animosity in the community, but she held her head high and was very strong throughout it. They, one thing I'd heard was, she was open, very open to learning about a new district. Like, she's not, she doesn't want to bring Waymouth to Hingham, right? She gets this as Hingham, and she would value that. Maybe that, you know, she has been, she left the district, I think, in February of this year, and maybe some folks thought, you know, that maybe that gives her a fresh perspective, right, after taking some time away. Many of the people I talked to had said that, you know, they would, they enjoyed working with her, they would work with her again. She, when it comes to evaluation, she provides feedback and suggestions, and some of the leadership team that I talked to had said, like, she gave them tips on improving staff meetings and things of that nature. See, maybe like it could be a little micro, but, but they had sort of, the context of it was that they had appreciated the feedback and helping improve things.
So, this is the candidate that I had the most reference checks for, and all pretty much consistent. This said she's passionate about education and student-focused, she's got great ideas, innovative, she wants to get to them quickly, she's not afraid to restructure organizations to get there, and she tries to get broad support from her team when changes do need to be made. She'll make the tough calls, even when they're not popular with everyone. She understands the families that she serves. Her ability to assess risk is really good. She identifies deficiencies and works to address the issue. Communicates really well with the team, doesn't shy away when the conversations are difficult. She's open-minded and respectful. She's open to feedback, so can adjust her approach. Great skills working on fundraising and promoting the organization. This is from a STARS board member. She holds people accountable, but she's realistic on goals. She's well-respected by the board at STARS. She's a great leader. Wouldn't ask anyone to do anything if she wasn't also rolling up her sleeves right next to the person. She gives a lot of support. She's got a DEI focus. She was the, I kept hearing this, the driving force behind the full-day kindergarten and the new school that's being built, and great work ethic. And one person said, we would be crazy not to hire her.
I spoke to two of her references. The one, the union rep that I was given is a special ed teacher, is on the executive board, but was not a leader. This person, more knew her from working collaboratively with her on the Vote Yes campaign for the new building. They had brought the union in to collaborate on that, which I actually thought was a really good idea. And, and then this person could give me a little bit more sense of what was going on. Said that, you know, they provided a good safety culture, or they were, she also served on the once-a-month meeting about safety during the pandemic. She said Jennifer is very approachable, and she knew her also as a principal. So that was, but this person couldn't give me any insight on the rest of union operations. And then I also spoke with the person who provides some of the external coaching that she had referenced in her interview, that she provides an internal coach and an external So she's worked with, so this person has worked with Jennifer a little bit as a coach, but coaches her administrative team, and has been able to observe her as well. So she's been working with them for about six years. She sees Jennifer as collaborative decision-making maker. She's close to her team especially, or was close to her team, especially her two assistant She noted, the coach noted that Jennifer could work more on delegating more and letting them do their job a bit more. But she did have a vision for trying to restore Waymouth to, in the sixties, in the seventies, Waymouth was a very high-achieving district, so that was a bit of her goal. But that, as, when she was in the superintendship, she got interrupted by the pandemic. So, you know, as you said, that she got the middle school done, and so, but I, I would, I tried to reach out to some other people as well, who wouldn't respond to me. So, I think, and I did, on the data of the districts, I was surprised at the, Waymouth is significantly different than Hingham. And once I looked at the data, I was more surprised at the difference than I had been going into it. And so that, that's a little flag for me, that it is very different. And she, you know, she is very personable and, you know, said she could learn a lot, you know, learn about our government and things. We have some other candidates who are much more experienced at that. So, I, you know, those are my thoughts.
So I spoke with two high-profile individuals that were listed as a reference, and they both spoke very highly of her. Someone that's very intelligent, very energetic, and a hard worker, someone that actually had problem leaving work because of her work ethic. She was constantly trying to do more. They, I want to go on the positive first. She is a student-focused. She has extensive experience in the school district operations, including with the experience with MSBA. Despite the fact that she is no longer with the district, the public schools, she continued being part of the school building committee and involved with the building of a new school She had, you know, based on the reference, good relationships with the union, former union leadership, not so much with the new leadership. And she didn't want to really come and challenge the school leadership. They said that she's very open to listening and involved the staff on everything, pretty much. I think some of the concerns, and by the way, she has experience with contract negotiations, arbitration. As a matter of fact, she had six arbitrations in her, the time that she was there. As a parent, she has been involved with the schools all along. I think there was reservation about the way that she left. People felt there was two sets of opinions, you know? Some people pleased the way she handled, you know, one of the incidents there. On the other hand, the individuals thought that, you know, she could, she could have handled differently. And I think some of the people said, you know, the fact that she left here because there was a lot of complaint, and she resigned, perhaps she would not be a good fit for Hingham, where parents are more involved with our schools, parents are volunteers, volunteer and get involved, and they let us, they hold us accountable, more accountable than any other area around us. What else? Yeah, so, so people, I did ask, you know, the reference, if she asked, was she applying in Waymouth, if they would take her back, they said right away. So they really, the individuals that I, you know, I spoke with really loves her and thinks that she's a superb lead, has all the qualification, and we would be lucky to have her in Hingham. I'll leave it at that.
Why, actually, this is the person I spoke to in most references, but for her. You know, and I found her as a very, and they described her as well, as an energetic leader who displays a high level of professionalism and is very articulate. She's, you know, she has a solid background in special education, has a good deal of expertise in literacy, you know, strong skill set on social-emotional learning. She was described to have a collaborative leadership style, someone who listens to parents and then looks towards solution. And, you know, she fully supports the arts and, you know, believes that the arts should be valued, just like the core subjects. I was impressed during her tenure that it was a year when they needed to loosen positions, and she made sure not to cut the fine-performing arts positions. And she has MSBA experience at all levels through the whole process. And I'll leave it at that. That's what I was doing.
I think she, during her visit, I think she had the strongest interview out of the four candidates. I thought she was, came across as really polished, really personable. I thought she was really strong with the meeting with the teachers as well. The reference checks were very mixed bag for me. I had some that were very glowingly positive, sort of echoed some of that. I've had, I had some references that were absolutely devastating. Clearly people who have an axe to grind with her, so take it with a grain of salt, but I just, absolutely, you're not getting what you think you're getting. People seem to either love her or hate her. I don't, I think she presented herself as, with an image of, I left Waymouth in very good terms, and you can call anyone the district, and I get along with everyone, and that clearly isn't the case. I think she had a very antagonistic relationship with the union. So I am, I left thinking she's potentially like the highest payoff candidate. I also think she's potentially the highest-risk candidate. I don't, I'm not comfortable that I'm getting a full picture of who she is based on just the, with the other candidates, it seemed you'd call all the references, and you got kind of the same story. And with her, I feel like I got such radically different stories that I couldn't believe they were talking about the same person. And I don't want to go too into detail on the, like, devastating reference checks that I had on her, but it was bad.
So I had the same, I think, thought she did a phenomenal job when she was here. The interview was, was great. I agree with Tim. I think that was, she was the best of the four, really. She's very good at doing the walkthrough with her. She seemed to know a lot of people in our building, so, so it was like she was, she seemed like she was coming home and away. It was, so that was nice. I spoke with people in our school committee, and they seemed to really like her. They're happy with how she handled things. You know, I think when you, when you change things up, which it sounds like she did, you can, you can make enemies, you know? And so I think that might be part of what you're finding. But they said she was receptive to their input, and they were pleased with how she navigated COVID. And mentioned the full-day kindergarten and the Chapman Middle School, again, that she was kind of the driving force. She, yeah, so her ability to navigate the political landscape, it was described as like, that's something you can't teach, like, you have it or you don't, and she, they felt like she did. There was, did seem to be, and I got this from the interview, and then from also from the references, a real emphasis on elementary schools. And it was, I guess, when she came in, each building was doing something dramatically different than the other, and so it was kind of making that cohesive, that she was instrumental in doing that. And not so much, I mean, I guess if we were to find more about her, I think I'd like to know more about her secondary, her thoughts with that. She did seem very knowledgeable at the elementary level and with special education. Let's see, the comment about delegate, could be delegating more, I heard some similar things, too. But I did, I think she has actual, you know, superintendent experience, she has budget experience, she has MSBA experience, so, and I enjoyed getting to know her, knowing she was here, so.
Is there one more comment? There's kind of some of it in context. One of the complaints that people had was that she is micromanaging on an elementary school level and completely ignores the middle and high school. That was worded how the person who doesn't like her worded it. That's not, you know, my careful, that's not my wording.
Yeah, no, it's tricky checking, with checking references, too. It's, because everyone has their perspective.
Absolutely.
But no, it's all helpful, and if you pull it together for a good picture. Okay, so, I guess, are there any of these kids, if we're, would, if we were to vote right now, is there anyone that you feel like you would want to know more about? And what would that look like? Or do you feel like we have enough information on all of the candidates to kind of move to the next step in the process? Are there any holes?
I, I would like to, if we can, with the timing, I would like to learn more about, talk to Margaret Adams a little bit more, and talk to Scott Carpenter a little bit more. Margaret, I'd like to see Melrose, just see where she's coming from. But I guess I'd like to talk to her a little bit more about being a superintendent. And I think that she has all of the natural leadership abilities. I love her approach and the culture that she's built, you know? She's been there for eight, nine years and came in with the previous superintendent, and everyone attributes a lot of the culture to her. So I feel she's very solid and could, and had to go through that change and did it very successfully. So I just want to talk to her more about that and get, and understand her more. I think with Scott Carpenter, I want to understand a little bit more about his communication styles and, yeah, just get to know him a little bit more. I think from looking at the data, the other two candidates from the communities they're coming from, they're not as stable communities from an overall organization. I'm not just, I'm not saying the individuals, but the context they're coming from, the performance isn't there, and they've also had, in Waymouth's case, they've had significant enrollment decreases over the years. And so it's just not the same budget challenges that we face. And the performance levels of the school. And the performance levels of the schools are not nearly where we are. And so it makes, and Wareham as well, you know, what the one reference I talked to about with Wareham was that he knew teachers in Hingham and he's, you know, the parents in Hingham are, you know, will criticize you if you used a, he's just using this as an example, a semicolon instead of a comma in an email, or if their kid gets an 86 instead of an 88 on a paper, whereas in Wareham, we're worried about even finding the phone number of the parent. And so, you know, so that, from that sense of where she would be coming from, I think it's too much of a stretch. And, and with, with Waymouth, that, you know, even though Jennifer had, she had some superintendent experience, but then that's also the only, she was a very short time and it was interrupted by the pandemic, and she was only in Waymouth. And looking at the data, you know, what happened in Waymouth during that time, it's a very different situation. The other two candidates were in stable, positive cultures, growing, student performance. And so that's why those two candidates are more appealing to me.
Yeah, so this process has been really interesting for me. Seeing it on paper, I'd have a view on who I'd want to pick, then spending the day with them, I have a different view, and then the interviews, you know, another view. The reference checks and looking at the student feedback and the teacher comments and everything, the full package. I am really comfortable with Dr. Adams. I go back and forth between Dr. Carpenter and Dr. Curtis for different reasons. Dr. Carpenter, love his budget experience and being able to talk through that, his calm demeanor. Dr. Curtis, I think, I like that she is not afraid to do the hard work, and I think there is going to be hard work to do.
Sorry to interrupt, but I think, is there more information you would want to get about Dr. Carpenter or Dr. Curtis? Or Dr. Adams, for that matter?
No, not necessarily.
Do you feel like you have enough?
Yeah, no, I think I'd have enough.
Yeah. Okay. Carlos?
I just want to say, you know, that how much I appreciate the work of the screening committee and how hard it is to submit to the school committee for candidates. I feel that I have enough information to make my decision. I did check not only with individuals in the towns of the candidates, but also here. I value our staff opinion, so I actually spoke not only with a former superintendent, but also directors, teachers, president of the union, rank and file staff, you know, at lower level. I spoke with different individuals and I'm ready actually to move forward, especially because we have so many school districts right now interviewing or putting the information out there, looking for superintendent. The number of candidates applying is very limited. And I'm afraid that if we wait too long, we may lose one or two of the best candidates that we have at this moment. I would actually entertain the idea of trying to move forward and to Liza's point, I mean, I think it is important if you wanted to get to know them too, perhaps we can set up a Zoom meeting with each one of them that we want to move forward to a little more, to gather more information. But if we do that, we need to do this yesterday.
Yeah, I agree.
And number one. Number two, we need to consider several factors. One, we have foster. Two, we are losing our business manager, director. And three, we have to look in, replace and, or perhaps hire in three new principals. And if that's the word that I say correctly, right? Because we, they temporarily have the positions. So there's a lot of things happening and I feel that we need to do the best we can to hire the most qualified candidate with experience on budgeting, HR, contract negotiations, and so on and so forth, so we can be successful and start looking at the other things. Now COVID is not over, right? For that reason, we don't know what's going to happen in the next few weeks, because things are changing rapidly. So with that, with all due respect, I would like to move faster rather than, you know, wait another month, perhaps.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't saying wait a month, believe me. No, no. We are in a good position because we stepped, we got, we started this timeline when we did and we've stuck to it, we've been disciplined about it, so we have, you know, we have access to these very good candidates. And I share your concern, but we can't move so much, we can't move, we can't move forward if we're not comfortable, like whoever we pick, we have to be sure that it's the right person for, so, what do I, Jen or Tim or Michelle?
I feel like I know enough to move forward in general. I think if the candidate that we're circling, I don't even know if it's appropriate to say, but if the candidate we're circling around is Dr. Curtis, I have more questions about her.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to offer that tonight.
Okay.
But I don't know, I don't have a feel for if we're sort of circling in on one yet, so.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, I can make this.
You're enough, okay.
I was going to suggest it would be easier to sort of like try to eliminate two and just focus on two and talk about it, continue talking.
Oh, can we just, are you? Yeah, I'm, you're, okay. Yep. Okay. So, let's see.
I feel like, sorry, if I can, because I think some of our hesitancy is that, for us, we've been doing this work for a long time, or at least I should not speak for it. My personal opinion is that we have been doing this for a long time and I'm just feeling like, I'm hopeful that everyone from the community to parents to staff to leadership, I don't want them to, like, I feel like there's a sense that we're moving so fast, but I don't really, like, we're not, we've been doing this work for a long time. And I'm just wanting to make sure that whatever decisions we make sets the next person up for success, right? That there isn't some sort of feeling like, that was too quick, or that was whatever. So I just want to just make sure that what we do, it makes the next superintendent as successful they can be.
Yeah, I mean, we are on the exact same timeline as we were last time, so, but I think last time, that was the only thing going on. This time, there's some other things going on too. Right. Okay. So, let's, so you want to narrow it down to two? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. I guess maybe just do a show of hands if we, if you want to consider, let's start with Margaret Adams, raise your hand. Okay, good, so we'll talk to her. Do you want to consider Andrea Schwalm? Okay, do you want to consider Scott Carpenter? Okay. And do you want to consider Jennifer Curtis? Okay. So we have Dr. Adams and Dr. Carpenter that we're talking.
How many votes were each one?
It was, they were all unanimous except for Dr. Carpenter. It was five people wanted to talk, consider him and two did not. Okay. So we kind of went through everything we've found before. Carlos sort of started making his case for Dr. Carpenter during that process.
Can I finish it?
Sure. Go ahead.
Well, you know, I'm coming into my sixth year here and it's coming to an end, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, everyone, stakeholders, as Michelle just stated, understand that we are doing the best we can. We have, well, two candidates, and we have to choose the best one. And based on everything they have stated before, on Dr. Carpenter having the budget experience, contract negotiations, building, was involved in the building of three schools, one in each of the district that he was part of it. As a matter of fact, after, right after the interview, I shook his hand, wished him good luck, and I said, you know, you should finish your interviews from now on, you know, because his name is Mr. Carpenter, saying that I'm not a carpenter, I'm a builder, because he did build three schools. And in a way, I really appreciate his charisma, don't you, Art? Humble and being a person that served on the military, for, in my opinion, I believed what, why he did, you know, to some, fully on the interview, sort of like didn't communicate well, is because he was trying to show who he is, exactly who he is. Very humble, very don't you, Art? Respectful. And he's coming to a district where we have more female on the staff, they're male, and I think, you know, he illustrated that, that he's one of those individuals that would be very, very respectful, gets along with the union on a very professional level, and he's ready to go, right? So he has the experience. I equally found that, you know, Dr. Adams is extremely intelligent, very capable, although she doesn't have the superintendent experience and doesn't have the contract negotiation, which is actually something that really value in a superintendent.
So can I just speak to that? Sorry, she did negotiate the last contract with the Teamsters, which is their principal and director, union.
Thank you for correcting that.
Yeah, yeah. And she's also been involved in other negotiations, sort of with preparation.
That's important.
Yep.
Yeah, because we don't want to misspeak, you know, if I don't get something, yeah, thank you for correcting that. But, you know, at the same time, you know, because I, you know, my background is on labor management, union leadership, I appreciate what they have started in Melrose in terms of the Labor Management Committee, because a lot of the times you can get a lot of things done, you know, when you're just having dialogues versus confrontation. You know, I think she, in another three years, perhaps continue being on the road as she is, or she would be a superb superintendent. Right now, I believe the best candidate is Dr. Carpenter. Thank you.
Can I challenge you a little bit? So I would like to learn more about him, but I also feel that Dr. Adams brings forth a lot of assets of things that we really need to work on, because I feel like the MSBA experience, she has some experience, but we also, we're well into the process. So we have a school building committee, our community is in support of the effort, and so I don't feel like, I feel like she can be a leader and meld into it, but we already wrote the ed plan, we have an established, very experienced school building committee, we have support from our select board, we have support from the community, and so it's execution of that project, not ignoring that, and Michelle's on the committee. Not ignoring that it's important and we have a lot to do, but.
I was going to say, sorry, if I just may, to support that, as well, OPM and an architect who are incredibly well versed in it, so they're the ones making sure everything is on track and you're not missing anything. So there is that piece of it.
But what Margaret, for me, her strength is as an educator and educational leader, and that's what's important for me right now and where it's going to take us in really the long run. And so it's also why I want to ask a few more questions of both candidates, but I feel like she, she's committed to her students and the data is there of the results that Melrose has gotten and, and without spending extra money. You know, in Montemoy, they have a student teacher ratio of, or is it, it's 11, it's 11 to one. Hingham and Melrose, you know, Hingham's is 14.2, Melrose is 14.5. And so, you know, like, they're getting these results in Melrose with a more challenging student population, with a similar student teacher ratio to ours. There's some magic there in the, in the teaching and the learning. And that's what I want to explore a little bit more about. And also I feel like she has a real focus on the secondary level and, you know, her background as a teacher is the elementary level, but that she shared her focus on the secondary level. So I guess for both of them, I want to understand a little bit more about the program of studies, the courses and that type of thing. I don't want to spend a lot of time, I'd love to do it the first week of January and make a decision. But I'm leaning one way, but I guess I need another chance to talk to them to make a firm decision. But both of them bring a lot of assets.
And don't forget, don't forget that he was also teaching in a principal besides.
Yes, she was too.
No, I'm just saying.
Which, which I feel fortunate that we have candidates, that I heard loud and clear from the staff that we need someone who's a teacher in central office. And both of these people were, are very focused teachers and, and actually a teacher, not just special ed director type. So I feel, that's why I'm leaning towards these two also, because they, and from the references I talked to, both of the teachers in those communities, both said they, they understand us as teachers and what we're going through and working with us in that manner. And to me, that was very important. That was high on my list of checkpoint and on the candidate profile too.
I think when it comes to Dr. Adams too, I don't want to discount what the kids, what the students had said, their feedback on Dr. Adams was very strong. Some of their notes were, and by the way, kudos to the parents in this community and the educational staff, of course, who teaches them as well. But just absolutely amazing. I mean, so well spoken, so confident, so mature, I mean, just really, just amazing. One of the students actually reached out to students that he knew in Melrose to do some, to find out more about the candidate. It was just amazing. But, so some of the things they had said about Dr. Adams was focused on equity, very strong candidate, really appreciated the Metco experience, appreciated her municipal government experience in Dedham, where she lives. They thought that she gave really great examples of initiatives that she implemented, and they took away the evidence that, you know, she gets things done even under tough opposition, which that Human Rights Commission getting that approved at town meeting in Dedham was not without opposition. One of the quotes that she said was that kids are often ready when parents are not, and that really resonated with the students because they are like, we're the ones who go to the schools. And, you know, sometimes parents have a lot of opinions and grownups have a lot of opinions, but we're the ones, and she sort of recognized that in the students. I, just very strong candidate, she was the favorite of a lot of the students, they felt she was like the most solid and had the really well-rounded opinions. I think, I completely hear where you are coming from, Carlos, in the, because that's the part that I'm, it's the only hesitation I have, that she is not a current superintendent. But when it comes to the MSBA project, Liza has this point, that's well covered. The, you know, John leaving as the budget director is a huge gaping hole that's going to be on the leadership team. But she's worked on the budget, she's done budgets. The people, the references that I talked to said she is ready. She is ready for this role and she's been ready and she's done a lot of the work. And I do, I think I've gotten, I've gotten beyond that, like, when you're an assistant superintendent, the next role is to become a superintendent, right? And someone has to do it and someone has to give her the opportunity. And I just think at this moment, to your point, at this time right now, right, Hingham is poised for change and I think she would have some just new perspectives and sort of that willingness to change. And I think, and I'm not a big data person as much as Jen and Liza are, but when I do look at the data comparing Melrose to Hingham, their results, our results, the size, per people spent, I mean, they almost lie perfectly on top of each other. So that's where I feel very strongly about her as a candidate.
Michelle is taking the words out of my head and verbalizing them. I think the story of Melrose is impressive. I think her references were. I think her references were, just had a different feel than the other references for me. There was this, like, I don't even know if I could put it into words, but this, just a warmth and a feel and a feeling and a respect, and, I mean, definitely, like I asked about, is she ready, even though she hasn't been a superintendent, and people said she's ready. She's also been applying to superintendent jobs for a little while. There are other, I saw some other positions she applied for and didn't get. So I think she's been wanting to be a superintendent for a while and is there. I, I don't know if, my biggest concern about Dr. Carpenter is, does he have enough oomph to drive this bus? Does he, he was, it was the end of a long day, but his communication was rambly, was soft-spoken, was, didn't get to the point, was often, not purposely evading, I don't think, I think he lost track of himself and never answered. I was not impressed with his communication, and I think that is, I mean, if I were going to list a couple, you know, two or three core strengths that a superintendent has to have, communicating is one of them, so I think that's a very big hole. I, on paper, I was, you know, went into that interview expecting for Dr. Carpenter to be my favorite, and I, I'm pretty strongly in the Adams camp.
I think, as far as the communication at the interview, I agree. I think I understood where he was coming to when he got to his point. He does have strong written skills, is what I hear, but I am more leaning on Dr. Adams for everything that Liza, Michelle, and Tim said. For me, it's, every single group has said great things about Dr. Adams, in particular and including the students. They were hands-down for Dr. Adams.
If she hadn't applied, Dr. Carpenter would be a very strong candidate. I don't, you know, I think we have two, we could flip a coin and win, but...
Right, yeah. I keep thinking about what we need right now, because it's not, it's not just like, who's a good fit for Hingham, and, you know, and who's a great candidate generically, and we, we're in a place where we have so many holes in our leadership team, that's happened for various reasons over the time, and, which is, you know, it's a little unnerving, but it's also a huge opportunity to kind of reshape and where do we want to go. And I keep thinking about who would be the best person to do that. I think we have two great choices between the two of them. Honestly, I'd be comfortable with either, you know, depending on, I don't know, it's what the committee decides, right? I did like Dr. Adams a lot. I think her answers, they were very specific, and I think that's, that's the thing that I really liked about her, is when you asked her a question, like, how would you do X, she would give you a four-part answer, you know, we would do A, B, C, and then it was very detailed, it was very, she, she really knew, knew that. And so I think of the two, I would, I mean, I would be ready to vote tonight on that, but I also understand that Liza's, you know, thoughts, that you want to make sure if you wanted to talk to, so.
Well, and I understand what Michelle brought up about having the, the community being behind the person.
Yeah.
By letting it, this sink in to people is a good point, if we have time. You know, if, if we knew tomorrow that they would be at risk of another, you know, other communities want them. Other communities saying the same thing we are, that they're good people. So, you know, we, it's, you know, if, if we have the luxury of one more double-check, that's great. If we don't, I guess I can move ahead.
Yeah, Jen, where are you on this?
Well, I said earlier, I could pick one, but I remembered one thing that I'm going to keep myself. I like them both. I really do. I think I would be fine with either one of them. I just, I really like what I heard from Dr. Carpenter's references when speaking to him on the phone. I think there's a, just a tiny risk with Dr. Adams, just because, you know, she hasn't been a superintendent before, and I just, slight, just a slight, somebody has to give her a chance. I think she's ready. I think she could do a great job here, and I think the same for Dr. Carpenter. It's, you know, I, I think maybe I want to go back and kind of visit, kind of what Liza said, just because, I also want to hear from the public, but the, you know, I mean, I know we already had the, they were already able to answer their, submit their responses, and I did read them, so I guess that's fair, that they did, you know, I did read their And I was, like Michelle said, I was so impressed with what the students said, and reading through their opinions. I mean, I was just blown away by what they had to say. But if I get, so are we deciding whether to move too forward or just making the decision tonight?
Okay, so I'm hearing from Jen and Liza that you would like a little more time. Right, and, okay, so now I'm going to ask Carolyn for advice on that.
If you'd like to set up another interview, Zoom or in-person, I would do it. So you should come back. Try, you can talk tonight, set a time, third or fourth, maybe, and then you could deliberate either after that or the next day. So you should probably step to, step outside and check once you take your time. I'll step outside, check which candidates to see if they can make it that night. Are you going to do it, invite them here, or do it by Zoom?
Or would we go to them?
How are we going to do it?
I'm open to anything. I'm feeling, given the circumstances, it might have to be over Zoom, I think.
Actually, it would be good to see them on Zoom.
Yeah.
And how they behave, because we're going to be on Zoom for a while. So that's probably a good...
Nothing's stopping you from driving to Melrose.
I practically do that drive every day.
Yeah. Maybe you can join us during lunch.
During my lunch hour. I'm just kidding, we don't have a lunch hour.
That's like, oh. Okay, so...
Teacher humor.
The third is my birthday, so I prefer the fourth.
Can't miss out to office hours again.
Oh.
Because then it defeats the whole purpose of office hours, and it just makes it seem like we're eluding instead of being transparent.
Okay, all right, I'll give up my birthday.
I'm sorry. I'll make cupcakes.
Well, what time will we do the interviews?
Yeah, can we do it early?
Because the interviews are, the office hours are 7:00 to 8:30.
Oh, yeah.
We could do, we could make office hours 7:30 to 9:00.
Yeah.
Just move. And then do the interviews.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock? Five o'clock? Five thirty? I don't know if that works for Carlos.
So what date are you thinking about?
The fourth.
The fourth. So just so it is clear that I'm going to be out of the country.
Yeah, but this is over Zoom.
Yeah, from the 26th through the 11th.
Yeah.
So if I'm not here, I'll leave it at, let's, let's do this. If I'm not here, I trust my fellow school committee members to continue the process, and I would be comfortable with either.
Okay. Can you zoom in?
I can try, but I'm not sure if I'm going to have internet connection.
Okay, okay.
At that particular time of the day.
Okay.
You're thinking about the fourth, right?
Yeah.
Eight thirty?
Fourth at 5:30.
Okay, hold on a second, let me put that on my phone. That's the best place to live.
I'll step out, see if they're available.
Okay, so you, yeah, so you're saying the fourth at what time?
5:30.
Not the fourth.
Yeah, the fourth.
And then we'll do it off of our...
Oh, that's right, that's right, okay.
So what, we do like one 5:30 to 6:30, and then 6:30 to 7:30? And then they get office hours.
And then we'll jump right into the air.
So the other one would be...
Be careful what you wish for.
The other one would be what? You better have a really good birthday, Liza. I'll come over and jump out of a cake.
Okay.
When will we discuss?
When we discuss the fifth.
On the fifth?
Yeah. Do you want to say seven on the fifth?
So on the fourth, you said 5:30, 6, 7 PM, or?
5:30 to 7:30.
5:30 to 7:30, two interviews.
Okay. And then on the fifth, what time?
What is it, 5:30 and what?
One at 5:30, one at 6:30.
On the fourth?
Yeah.
The fifth, what time?
Seven?
Seven on the fifth.
We would deliberate, we would deliberate.
Oh, okay, I thought they were saying, sorry.
Can we do 6:00 PM, because it's two hours difference?
Oh.
Would be okay, Carrie, to do at 6:00 PM instead, because it's two hours difference?
Yeah.
On the fifth?
Yeah, on the fifth at 6:00?
6:00 PM?
Yeah, that works about that.
I'm not sure where I'm going to be, I'm just from the countryside, the internet, so it's better than Vermont, or New Hampshire, or whatever.
Email Heather right now and ask her to change the time.
Cool. And that's good, too, because it gives the community a little more time to provide additional feedback if they want to.
Sure, they're available, I guess.
For the interviews, can we nail down the areas that we have concerns, who want to hear more about? I heard budget, I heard superintendent experience, I heard communication style, maybe get questions targeted towards what we want to know?
I think at this time, we can, we don't have to ask the same questions of both of them. We can be very specific to just them.
Okay.
Right. I want to hear more about special education from Scott, specifically.
From both of them, because in her current job right now, she does not in charge of SPED, she's in charge of curriculum. The other assistant superintendent is in charge of SPED.
Right, yeah, exactly. I know, I spoke with the Melrose CPAC, one of the chairs.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's related, because it's curriculum.
Of course.
But...
And she did talk about MTSS and...
Yes, yep, exactly.
Which is special ed-ish.
It's related.
Yeah.
Make sure we test our WhatsApp again, Carrie.
Test what?
The WhatsApp.
Oh, yes, that's right.
That worked out pretty good.
Yeah, that was good. Yeah, if you travel overseas, that's a good thing to use.
It's so great. The quality of the sound is unbelievable.
Yeah.
It sounds like you're in the same room with the person.
Yeah.
One meeting where I had to Zoom in, and I was the only one Zooming in, so I was like, I could hear like, the first three words of everyone's sentence, and then people would trail off.
Right, yes.
So at my home, the boys are at home, and there's like 100 TVs, 100 different games, right? So I'm competing with them for Wi-Fi. It's kind of crazy, so that is why I have a lot of problems.
Carlos, it's easy, just handcuff them before the meeting.
The mic is open.
Just joking.
The po-po is coming.
So on the meeting when we deliberate, because Carlos will be out of the country, do we want to do that on Zoom, or do you want to try to do it in person again? I mean, it's so much better in person.
Well, can we do it in person and have them Zoom in?
Yeah, it's just tough, you know? But maybe, I mean, Carlos, would you want a WhatsApp in, instead of trying to Zoom in?
That would work.
Because then it's just audio, you put it, I don't know, it seems like that might be...
No, but for me, regardless, I need internet for WhatsApp as well.
Oh, okay.
Oh, actually, no, I do, because I, I'm not going to have the service. And that was the reason why I was using WhatsApp. Yeah, I'm not going to have my phone available. Yeah, that would be fine. By the way, when I, when I call in, with the Zoom, I don't have to see anybody. If you put a face in the wall, it's fine.
Yeah.
But if you place the computer in the middle of...
In the middle of nothing.
Is there any chance you can do it earlier, like at 5:00 to 6:00, we have a candidate who has to do it?
Yeah, I think so, right.
Budgeting.
Oh. Yes, we respect their work.
Yeah, 5:00 to 6:00, and 6:00 to 7:00?
Yeah, does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Now you guys have dinner.
We'll be eating dinner in the bathroom.
Do you want to still change the time?
Give yourselves a breather?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It feels so...
Probably you'd...
They feel like kind of the family guy. So is Scott, 5:00 to 6:00?
Okay.
I almost do like it, if we meet, even those two hours, if we meet on the same event.
Well, they have office hours.
Yeah.
Oh, you have office hours.
Then you'll probably get questions.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's good.
We probably want to do the office hours before a decision is made.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
So we're not answering for the decision, we're getting feedback.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that's true.
Send that treat for the February people.
You still want to change the office hours to 7:30, though? Give us a little...
And it makes no difference to me.
Okay, let's do it.
Yeah.
So we'll get a little break in between. And if we might want to wrap up.
Yeah.
For a couple minutes.
So, and then the fifth, we're delivering in person with, and then Carlos will...
And then Carlos will Zoom in, or, yeah.
Your WhatsApp?
WhatsApp.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
That works. Okay. All right. I think we have our next steps. Does anyone have any items for 48 hours?
No.
I know, it's all the...
It's been yesterday.
Yeah, exactly. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? No. Okay, we are adjourned at...
Time of the...
8:47. 8:47.
Okay.
Thank you.